My name is Marilyn Pierce. I am co-chairman of the Middletown GMIC Warming Station. President Rodriguez. And we have a quorum. Tonight, we have the minutes from September 1, 2020. Our distinguished sponsor, Alden Green, seconded by Alden Tobin. All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city and would like to address the council, please step forward.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Pierce. I am co-chairman of the Middletown GMIC Warming Station. First of all, thank you for what you're going to do tonight. It's appreciated that we have a safe, warm place for people who do not have one, to keep them safe during the cold winter months. Right now, we have a slight problem in that many of our volunteers are older, as I am, and have pre-existing medical conditions and are unable to volunteer at this time. We have two volunteer training sessions coming up, one on November 9, one on November 17, at Temple Sinai, 75 Highland Avenue, Middletown, at 7:00. It will last usually about an hour. We give you a tour, show you where we have things, what we do, how we do it, and so forth. You have to be 18 years of age or older in order to volunteer, and God bless our Turo students who are right there sending emails and want to come help out. Just to let you know, we have taken the following precautions for the COVID-19 virus. They will be instituted nightly. All guests must have their temperature taken before entering the building. If the temperature is 100 degrees or over, they are not allowed inside. The health department says they have to see their healthcare provider at that point. Many of our guests don't have a healthcare provider, so we will send them to the hospital to get checked out. Masks will be distributed and will be worn by everyone unless they are eating or sleeping. All staff and volunteers will be given gloves, face masks, shields, and they must wear them at all times in the warming station. We have hand sanitizer, which will be available to all, and hand washing is a must. Because the temple and Rabbi Rubenstein have been so gracious in giving us their space for the time we need for this season, there is plenty of room where we can have every single cot six feet apart on all sides instead of 18 inches. It's a big difference. It's much safer. So, thank you for what you're doing to help those in need, and it's always good to help our neighbors. Thank you.
Good evening. Ralph John Savaris, 36, Lenox Place, Middletown, New York. Right now, there's a lot of mistrust and distrust in government, and fortunately, in the city of Middletown, it's the opposite. Members of our community had a concern, brought it to the attention of the mayor, and the mayor took the ball, and it wasn't the Green Bay Packers on defense, went right to the goal line and scored a touchdown. And he did it in a very quick, efficient way, and the communication and the transparency was there throughout the whole process. And as a result, today, we have resolution to a concern. These are good people who had concerns, and they needed them addressed, and they now have faith in government now, which I think is very, very important. And for our alderman, Mr. Green, who probably was baptized under this situation and put on a little pounds in the process, he was there. He was there too, and he followed the chain of command. He worked with the mayor. He worked with others, and he was transparent through the whole process. And lastly, I'd like to thank this young lady, Ms. Bruni, in watching the emails and everything else. I don't know if she's a magician in her spare time, but she was pulling money out of hats that I've never heard of. I've been in this business for a long time, and the way she did it and promptly how she did it was really, really rewarding. She's probably a young lady that could go much higher, but I think her commitment is to the city of Middletown. And the other thing what happened here is it brought the community together. Fred Rogers, no relation to Aaron, made millions of dollars about talking about the neighborhood. We now have a neighborhood. People who didn't talk to each other now talk to each other. People know that there's help around the way, and that's what it's all about. And this is what this process did. It brought us together, and we thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your leadership. We thank you, Mr. Green, and we thank you, Ms. Bruni, for what you've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to address the council? Okay, remarks of the mayor?
Don't go anywhere, Ralph.
It's a game on at 8:15.
I always have a problem with a guy who wears a jet jersey or a jet hoodie. The 1-6 or 1-7 jets.
Zero and eight.
Zero and eight, all right. Criticizing the 5-2 Green Bay Packers, but you can leave now, Ralph. The next year. Let me begin with the COVID because we'll tie into everything, I hope. As you know, the cases are on the rise, and same thing here in Orange County. Middletown is number three on the list. We have 13,704 positive cases. The governor's office, on a daily basis, is reinforcing the need for compliance. We've reinforced that with all city departments, and that, when on the job, police, fire, DPW, that we've reinforced with their managers, that we have to really come into another round of this type of, this disease, another focus here in the city. So, we've dropped, you know, the communities in Orange County, New York State, we're doing a good job, but it's on its way back. We want to make sure we keep doing a good job. We want to make sure everyone just doesn't sit back and get lazy on this, so we're going to be enforcing it. Businesses, beware. The task force is in town doing their due diligence. I saw a posting today from a Middletown business that was very angry that they were reported by a customer, and they were contacted by the Orange County District Attorney's Office. So, the process is working, so hopefully, people will pay attention. The governor has issued updated travel guidelines that will be applying to Alderman Massey upon his return. Travelers, as you know, he's out of state for now, but they must obtain a test within three days of departure from the state that they're leaving, and they must, upon arrival in New York State, quarantine for three days. On day four of the quarantine, they must obtain another COVID test. If both tests come back negative, the traveler may exit quarantine early upon receipt of the second negative diagnostic test. So, there are other rules with this, but basically, you know, we did have a few employees that have left the state. This applies, I believe, to everyone. Essential workers do have a little bit of a different route to follow, but they, but everyone, before they can come back into this building, they have to answer those questions, or any city building, and make sure they comply with the state guidelines. The warming station, Marilyn Pierce just touched on it, and the, we did have a press conference today at 5:30. Over the weekend, I did email to all of you the proposal. In the background, not that I had to mail you, the background, you were aware of what we've been trying to do since the announcement came from the Greater Middletown Interfaith Council, that the warming center would be relocating to Highland Avenue, to Temple Sinai. And I would also like to extend a thank you to Temple Sinai. I know they took a lot of grief throughout this process, and Rabbi Rubenstein, and I know they took not only grief from the neighborhood, but I think internally, they had some major discussions on what to do. And it's always a tough decision, especially complicated by COVID. And I'm, you know, everyone has fears, and we, you know, including all of us here, so there was a lot of discussion on this, a lot of anger, a lot of concern. The neighbors were rightly justified in bringing their concerns here to City Hall, and we tried to do what we could to make the situation better. We did have an alternate solution, which I presented at the last meeting, and with a slip of the tongue, I gave you the location of that, but it was bleeped out, thankfully, by Eileen for future viewing, but, and that was Second Baptist Church. Pastor Perry, who's new to Middletown, stepped up to the plate and was willing to look at the possibility of relocating the warming shelter or warming station to the Second Baptist Church on North Street. After some, a couple of meetings, we were unable to do so for a couple of reasons, but one was the eight-year commitment that would have been required by HUD, and, you know, every St. Paul's, Temple Sinai, those are annual one-year commitments. So, to ask one church to make an eight-year commitment was a little bit on the, might have been too much of an ask. And then there were some issues, building issues, that are not the big issues, but the most important issue was the eight-year commitment. So, as we were meeting with Second Baptist, we also continued our search to look at other locations. Alderman Green, Alderman Kleiner had suggested looking at other city properties, and at the time, we were unable to do so. One of them was full of mold and would require hundreds of thousands of dollars of investment. One of them was Mulberry's, the old Mulberry Street Senior Center. We did finally, as this progression, as it was moving forward, you know, this was in early to mid-August. On September 11, the CARES Act was once again funding some city operations related to COVID, and we received notification on September 11 that, in addition to the $100,000 that we previously received under the CARES Act, that an additional $250,000 would be made available to the city to address COVID concerns. The first group of money, we were using 100,000, was more than 100,000 out of that first batch of money. If you recall, 160,000 was going to small business loans, and we were considering re-budgeting or taking 100,000 out of that 160 and putting it into the, a project at Second Baptist that would have cost $350,000. That project did die, but at the same time, we were able to then revisit the old Mulberry Street site now that we had some additional funds from another agency, and we also had the ability to talk to our tenant at 8 to 10 Mulberry Street. As you know, we had a lease with a tenant who was doing the facade work on a number of buildings in downtown. The purpose of that lease was, well, A, they were paying us rent, and B, they were doing improvements to the building, which was vacant for many years, and in exchange, we were allowing them to work as a staging area, and I think one or two of the employees were living in the apartment, and they were doing their job as in downtown. To move them would have been a major issue for the tenant, and although they were month to month, we possibly could have sought eviction, but then evictions were put on hold. So, we decided to go speak to Mr. Sanchez as gentlemen, and he was very, when he heard of the project, he was very cooperative. He said, "Find me another place, and I'll be more than happy to, under these conditions, to, you know, consider it." On Mill Street, we own 25 Mill Street, which has been a vacant house for many years, is in pretty bad condition. We've had three different groups look at the property, trying to sell it, and to no avail. It needs substantial work. The tenant at 8 Mulberry is a contractor, so we cut a deal that he can relocate his downtown operation to 8-10 Mulberry Street. He then would be responsible to bring it up to certain housing standards, and in exchange, he would barter $50,000 worth of labor for a future project that the city of Middletown would be looking at. You know, we have quite a few that we would not be putting money into at this time, you know, direct cash, so it's a good opportunity to do something aesthetics with the, like the wall at the psychiatric center that we want to get, and that's the type of work that they do. So, that's not where I'm saying it's going, but that's the type of project that we're looking at. So, we'll be putting a house back on the tax roll, fixing up a house in a bad neighborhood, and at the same time, participating with the Greater Middletown Interfaith Council in this business. As you know, I'm not an advocate of the city getting into this business, and that was some of the resistance before. It's a county obligation. I believe the county has mismanaged this and pushed the burden on the cities of Newburg and Middletown primarily, the housing of the homeless and the sheltering of the homeless. But we're at the point now where, based on the meetings that we had, I don't anticipate the county moving at all on any of these issues, and the reason being is because they don't have to. So, when you make that argument, it's a tough, it's a tough argument to go up against. So, we decided, as a city, that we would become the landlord of the Greater Middletown Interfaith Council Warming Station. We will need a five-year commitment from them to operate the facility. Are we on the hook for something, I guess, is some of the concerns? If they don't operate the facility for a minimum of five years, yes, the city could be faced with reimbursing HUD, proportionately pro-rating that $250,000. Did we plan on selling that building, which had a value of, we estimated between $350,000 and $450,000? Yes, we did, and we were hoping to offset some of the revenue losses from this year's sales tax and property tax collections. So, those are the downsides to the city. The upsides, obviously, are we're able to bring the warming center back. It's right next door to the former warming center, so there should be no neighborhood opposition. There should be no, although we are going to have a public hearing so people can voice their concerns, and, but it's, I believe, the right thing to do for us. It's the right thing to do for the GMIC, and I think it's the right thing to do for the neighbors of Temple Sinai. And I don't believe a facility like this belongs in a residential neighborhood, and I know there are good people, there are a lot of rules, and people are people, I agree, but I don't think anyone can argue the point that the placement of a homeless shelter, a warming station, a warming center, or anything of that sort smack in the middle of a residential area does not raise concern for people in that neighborhood. So, we're beyond that now. We toured the building with Pastor Rustico, Rabbi Rubenstein. We hired an architect, Joe Fuji, who also did work for us at Second Baptist Church, on the preliminary plans there. We will have a short-term goal and a long-term goal. The short-term goal being that we will try to occupy the building by the end of this year, assuming the asbestos and lead reviews are favorable to us. We do need to do a floor replacement in one room, a tile floor, and some filtration system review, but for the most part, the building's in pretty sound shape to get us through the winter. We will look at using those COVID funds then to do roof replacement, my full HVAC in the older portion of the building, and sidewalk repair. There's a foundation wall that looks like it might need some, or not a foundation wall, a landscape wall holding up some of the bank. So, there is work to be done there. We're going to budget the full $250. If we don't use it all, then of course, we will reappropriate it for another purpose. But we're very confident that we will be able to, outside of the fact that the, that it has lead or asbestos, which I don't think the addition does, because it was built in '85, we, I'm almost positive that doesn't have lead or asbestos. The older section may have something, but we'll get that mitigated as soon as possible. The process is Maria has to file an amendment with HUD. We then have to have a public hearing, and then we have to adopt the amendment, and hopefully, HUD will approve it. We believe it can all be done before the end of December. Concurrently, we'll do the work. We've had plumbers, electricians, and HVAC people in the building already, and we're doing a review of, an assessment of what's needed, and we'll be able to have some better answers as we move forward. We, the resolutions tonight are somewhat, they're not vague, they're specific, to the point of you will be entrusting in myself to sign a lease with GMIC. I can only tell you what the lease terms are. Alex has not had an opportunity to draft them, but the lease will be five years. We're hoping it will be a five-year renewable every year. We'll renew it, but that will come back to you for a vote, where every year, it'll be five years out, and we'll also look at the rules and regulations that we would apply on the warming center operations. As you know, St. Paul's and the temple had different rules. St. Paul's will not allow police access into the facility. We are going to have part of the, we're going to have the rules that the temple was going to apply, where the police would have access into the facility for specific purposes. So, but nothing that the GMIC has not agreed to with the temple will be in this agreement here. So, we're pretty confident. I think the temple likes it. It's not a basement. It's actually a very nice facility, and we don't have to, as I said, make a major investment into the building. During the years, the months that the facility is not being used as a warming center, we have different options. One is cooling center, which Jerry usually handles at the senior center, or other uses that we can possibly put in place, meeting rooms for maybe some organizations, and, but we'll have a whole host of options that we can do. But for that, November through March or through April, whatever, early April, it will be leased to the Greater Middletown Interfaith Council. They have to meet the obligations, the reporting requirements that we will be required to do. There's the possibility we may be able to fund the utility under this program or another of Maria's programs. So, I think overall, it's a better, a better plan than what was in place. So, that's all I have. Unless anybody has any questions. Yes?
Alden Johnson?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Are we still sticking with 30 guests for the facility?
Yes, yeah, the limit is 30 guests, and plus two, I think there's accommodations for two staff. So, it'll be 32 beds. I believe the breakdown was 23 male, seven female, and they are separate rooms. There's no partition that's necessary, as was required at the other facility, and two of the staff. The, I guess it's interchangeable depending upon need, but that will be up to, up to them.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Winner Park, Winner Parking, Alderman Green's baby. We do have a resolution tonight that will address this. This is an outcome of years of discussion on alternate side of the street parking, and when we could not reach a conclusion, our decision, Alderman Green came up with a pilot project, which I believe everyone in committee supported, in which we will issue permits to people who do not have a driveway. There's strict criteria, there's strict requirements. I won't get into the whole, the whole parking issue here. There's the requirements they sign up for NICSIL. You can only, if you have a driveway, if you have one driveway for two cars and your family has four cars, you're not eligible. This is only for properties that do not have a driveway. So, I'll let Alderman Green discuss it under the resolution, but again, it's a pilot project and with a revocable permit, so if people abuse it, the permit will be revoked. Tomorrow's election day. We are writing, doing our rides to the polls. I know some days, we had quite a few riders that we, Jelousa sent me the report today, and it's apolitical, so anyone of any party that needs a ride to the polls tomorrow, please call 346-4070. They will pick you up at the door, bring you to your polling place, and then pick you up from your polling place and bring you back home. So, everyone be safe and vote. Thank you so much. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Remarks of the Department of Health, Economic Development?
Good evening, everyone. On the Community Development Agency front, we did close on our house on Wickham Avenue on Friday, so we have a brand-new homeowner in our city, and we're moving forward with 198 Wickham as well. So, it was good to see that house finally completed and a new homeowner. As the mayor was mentioning, our HUD funds, our COVID relief for the warming station, I have to say, my staff in my office really moved swiftly as well once this project was coming about, and there's a lot that goes on behind it. I want to thank them because we already got the amendment ready and the advertisement, the legal ad and stuff. We're just waiting on tonight after you guys hopefully approved the ability to move forward with the lease, so we could add that to our paperwork to move forward. So, again, I want to thank them also for working hard on this and getting the job done so we could move swiftly, and that's about it.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria.
Good evening, all. The electronic drop-off last weekend went very well. About 21,000 pounds of electronics were picked up or dropped off at our garage, which is very successful. Leave pickup started today on the second word. Please, just a reminder that keep the leaves no more than four feet from the curb or the edge of the pavement, so it does not become hazard to the vehicles and pedestrians. We'll be going around to pick up as fast as we can. Pre-construction meeting today took place for the skylight, replacement of the skylight. That's Alderman Kleiner's favorite project, the skylight here in between City Hall and City Court, and hopefully, we're going to start the demo tomorrow, and it will take about a week to install the new structure. After that, all the tile replacement and the handicap ramp and the stairs will be done over, sorry, will be done over the, at night, so there will not be any interruption for ADA accessibility to City Hall, police, or City Court. During the demo in there, if there is any need for handicap accessibility into City Hall, City Court, or PD, there's an intercom in there, so residents will be requested to buzz the police dispatcher. The police dispatcher will get hold of the construction superintendent. Construction superintendent will be at the job site in here during work hours. He will go and make sure that we have a safe passage for that person to use the handicap ramp to access City Hall, PD, or court. So, that's all arranged, and hopefully, that will work out very well. And it's only until the end of the week, we are hoping, weather permitting, and no unforeseen condition being uncovered when we take this structure down. Also, another couple of pre-construction meetings took place today for the demo of Seven Canal Street, which work has started today with asbestos abatement for Seven Canal, and asbestos abatement will start on 42 West Main Street as well for preparation for the demolition of both buildings. The contractor is on site, and he's going to keep going until he's done with both of them. Some good news about the water, about our raw water, meaning our reservoirs. You've heard about what happened in the city of Newburg and FAFs and all these chemicals in the water. So, the EPA and Department of Health in New York State, they revised the regulations. Now, every municipality has to test for them, and each test is like $500 for one sample, so we have to test for two reservoirs. They are the main feeder reservoirs, so that's $1,000 in there. But the good news is the EPA lowered the regulation from 70 parts per trillion to 10 parts per trillion, and when we did our testing, the results came out, and it's all... not detectable in the city of Middletown, so our water is very clean. All these constituents or compounds or components that were found in Newburgh water, they are non-existent, basically. We could not detect them in our water, which is very good news. And that is testament to how clean our reservoirs are, our watershed is, and we're continuing to pursue the purchase of property around our reservoirs in order to preserve the water quality of the runoff that goes into the reservoir, because that's the name of the game. You want to keep the water clean in there, so you want to keep the watershed clean as much as possible. Reservoir, the water level in our reservoirs at 86% capacity, and we had a couple of days of rain, which that will show off, will show up in, in our water level later on, by a few days, because there is a lag time between the rain and seeing the water in the reservoirs. Before you tonight, there's a traffic operation request for resolution, which is approved an agreement between the city and DOT for funding about $411,000 in there for consultant fees, and we are responsible for up to 20% of that, of that funding. But most of the time, the state will pick up about, sometimes 15%, sometimes 10%, subject to the availability of the fund in the state. But the maximum for us is 20% to be responsible for, and this will tie into a conference phone call that the mayor and I had with Orange County Transportation Council, where we gained the support of the council to give us DOT, additional DOT funding in an amount of about 13.5 million dollars additional for the 8 million that we already have from them. This is only just like a handshake over Zoom conference. There's going to be a vote November, this, next week. There's going to be a vote in there, and hopefully we'll secure all the entire funding. And this is great news for us. That will tie into the traffic operations, and the entire project will be now up to $21 million. The traffic operations, that's under design right now for eventual construction. And with that, I will conclude my remarks. If you have any questions for me?
Any question for Jacob Alderman-Kleiner?
Thank you. I'm not sure if this is for you or for Parks and Rec, but are the reservoir trails are closed due to the wind today? Are they going to stay closed till they can check for trees and stuff? Do we know?
The mayor, the mayor, he, he ordered them closed because he was worried about the trees falling down because of the strong wind. Once the wind subsides, I'm sure they'll open, right?
Parks, they're giving me an evaluation daily, depending on conditions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Police Chief?
Good evening, all. I actually have nothing this evening, unless you have anything for me?
See you better. Anyone questions? Thank you, Chief. City Clerk?
I have nothing this evening.
Any question for John? Okay, public hearings.
Okay, we have a public hearing tonight on changing property zones to the DMU zone. Read the public notice. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 2nd. On as near 8:00 PM as possible, common council chamber, second floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed zone change from C2 and I1 zones to the DMU downtown mixed-use districts for the following properties. And I won't name all of them. They're on the list of the public hearing notice. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given an opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed zoning change, and the complete list and the application for the zone was available in the office of the council clerk, city of Middletown, 16 James Street, room 12. This was published in the newspaper on 10/27 and 10/28, also on the city website. And also too, for the record, there were mailings that went out to all of the 300-foot rule on all of these properties.
Okay, at this time, the public hearing is now open.
Yeah, the request was made through, through our Economic Development Office for your consideration. For about a year now, we've been meeting with neighbors on the, in the area of Tony Boffa's restaurant, the intersection of Railroad and East Main, where the Heritage Trail will be coming in. And similar to what we asked for at the last meeting with Fulton and, and Monhegan and Mills, we're looking to define, get some absolute boundaries on our downtown DMU district. And the area along East Main and Railroad had, I think it was two or three different zonings over there, or at least, at least two. I know part of it was industrial, part of it was commercial, and we felt that the, that would now be the gateway to the downtown with the Heritage Trail coming in. So, we're asking that we extend the DMU to the corner of Railroad in East Main, and this is with the support of all the property owners, or no opposition from any of the property owners. I don't think I've spoken to every single one of them, but the major ones, we did. We met with Tony's Restaurant a few times. We have met with the dental group, advised them, and, and I know there's a gentleman here, size here, who owns property on East Main, but they seem to be excited about the opportunities that the DMU zone creates for their property. And we, we're asking, you know, we're not looking to extend this, continue to extend the DMU by definition as downtown. So, we're just changing the definition of where downtown begins, and we think we've got it down to, at least in those two areas, we, three areas actually. Bottom of Highland by Union is what we consider downtown, Fulton Mills, and then over here, East Main and Railroad is absolute. So, the, we're asking for your support on it, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Any question from the council? This time, I'll open it to the public. Anyone from the public have any questions? Any council members have any questions? Do I got motion to close the public hearing?
So, move.
Alden Johnson, Second Officer Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings are closed. Okay, remarks of Alderman, Alderman Tobin.
I just want to remind everybody to vote. I know it's mentioned before. And make sure, please, vote all the way down the ballot. I know justice reform is very important. It's been talked about here and throughout the country. A lot of those decisions where the rubber meets the road are your sheriffs, your DAs, your judges, which are on the end of the ballot, so make sure you go all the way down, and your city council members. So, please, make sure you exercise your right to vote, and vote all the way to the end. Thank you.
Alderman Green?
Thank you very much. I just want to thank everyone, you know, mayor and Interfaith Council, and everyone who works with the warming station, the neighbors who've all come out and expressed their feelings. I think we have a great plan going forward, and, you know, I really think that it's, it's going to benefit all involved, including the, the guests of the warming station. I think they're going to have a, a very nice place to be. So, thank you, everyone, for your hard work on that. I do want to also thank the police chief and the corporation council and DPW Commissioner and the mayor for all the hard work that they did for our winner parking plan that we, the mayor briefly spoke about. So, look forward to moving forward with that, hopefully, and, you know, with the support of everyone on the council. So, we'll get into particulars as we get to a resolution, but something to look forward to definitely, a long time coming. And also, tonight, we do have a resolution for the stop sign to be added on Commonwealth at J, so I hope everyone will support that for our constituents. And then, I do just want to remind everyone, please do vote. It is very important, so I won't take much more time on that. Also, we are going to, given the rise in COVID cases, we're going to postpone our constituents' meeting for the month of November. We feel that it's too cold to hold it outside, gets dark too early right now, and, you know, we really just, please feel free to reach out to Alderman Kleiner and myself if you have any questions or concerns, and we'd be happy to discuss them with you. That's all for tonight. Thank you.
Aldman Johnson?
Thank you very much. I did get to vote Thursday in Middletown. It was a very pleasant experience. Took about 15 minutes. It was organized. It was COVID-friendly, and thank you to all that made that happen the way that they made it happen. It's been a long and winding road to Election Day tomorrow, and I share concern with the rest of the country that we can remain calm and peaceful as we tabulate the results. Thank you.
Alderman Klauner?
15 minutes, Alderman Johnson.
I'm a mess. I picked the wrong time and date. It was raining.
It was two and a half hours, but it was fun, and I met lovely people in line, and we enjoyed every milestone of reaching a new fence line. But we did it, and we voted, and for anyone who has not done it yet, please, 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 tomorrow, vote, vote, vote. That is all I have to say tonight.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I want to thank the mayor and Maria and her staff and, and, you know, everyone who worked so hard to resolve this, hopefully for the time being and maybe for a long time ahead, the location for a warming station. It's, COVID has changed almost everything, and that was certainly one, and I thank Marilyn for her remarks and call for volunteers. And the warming station closed early last March because it was obvious it was unsustainable that way. So, I think when Marilyn started thinking about this in April, that was one of the first things she reached out to, asking about the old Mulberry House and the old senior center. At the time, it was not available, but I'm, I'm glad Mr. Sanchez is agreeable. I want to thank him for, he really does love Middletown and is really trying to do his best in renovations, and this is part of what the city is about, so I thank him for agreeing to, and hopefully this will be a good solution. Voting, you know, we are a democracy, and this is how the people speak, not, not money, not capital and capitalism. This is where the people have their voice in the voting. And in the old days, you used to ride on horseback and, and talk about the voting, but we've never had a result on Election Eve. Never. We've had the media, you know, the demon media, call states and call results and do, use their formulas to predict what the results will be, but none of that gets certified for, usually for at least a month. I mean, you're waiting for all the military ballots to come in, you're waiting for final count, so that's nothing new. I just hope that all the anxiety and dread that so many people feel because you have a bunch of yahoos with guns and pickup trucks riding around, I, I just hope it ends up being more like Y2K, when we were all so concerned about, you know, with the new century, that all the computers and everything would crash, and everyone woke up on January 1st, 2000, and, oh, fine. So, I'm, I'm hoping the election goes like that. It was heartening that first day of early voting on that, that Saturday, you know, week ago Saturday, that the line went all the way down, around the whole senior center, and back out onto Mill Street, and all the way back up, and all the way back to the beginning. I mean, seeing so many people get out to vote, that's, that's really a good sign, whoever you're voting for, that's, that's, and people used to tell me, ah, but I'm not political. That's not part of being political, that's part of being a citizen. And yes, freedom, that's what we're about, but freedom with responsibility, that's the other thing we're about. And when I hear someone in the president's family talk about COVID deaths and say, well, they're almost nothing, I take that personally. I, I really do resent it. Dave Bechtel was not almost nothing. John Prine was not almost nothing. A quarter of a million people is not almost nothing. So, I, I just, when, when you have to, you know, a couple of years ago, we had a march for science. Just that, and I said at the time, to think that we would ever have to have a march for science. Science is about truth and understanding. It's a method for really coming up with a theory and then proving it with the evidence. Science is not a decision of what to do. It's not political. It's non-political. It gives you the information you need to make your political decisions. So, once you politicize it, I, it's just, it's, it's really beyond me. I'm still wondering why, when the president got COVID, they did not give him hydroxychloroquine. Because he did say, that's the miracle cure, what do you got to lose? No. He, he got, you know, he got Regeneron, and he got remdesivir and, you know, what, and steroids, whatever the latest treatment was, but not hydroxychloroquine. So, everybody tomorrow, go vote. If you haven't voted yet, it's really important. Thank you.
Aldman Jean-François?
Yes, good evening. I mean, we've been discussing this for months now, and tomorrow is the deadline. Just encourage everyone to come out and voice their opinion tomorrow. This is it. Tomorrow is the deadline. Encourage everyone, come out, vote, vote, vote. That's the bottom line. This is very important to us. I think we're going to get it done. Thank you.
Alderman Burr?
I'd just like to say, go out and vote. And my constituent of the First Ward, we have a change in our voting place. Instead of going to North Street, you're going to go to St. Joseph's Jimenezia for the District 5 and 6 of the First Ward. Thank you.
Okay, new business.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $1,700 within the senior center, senior center 2020 budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to approve SECR for a two-lot subdivision for property located at 86 to 144 Dorothea Dix Drive.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to approve the two-lot subdivision for the property located at 86 to 144 Dorothea Dix Drive.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Graham Cassoun authorizing the implementation and funding for the first instance 100% of the federal aid and state program aid eligible cost of a transportation federal aid project and appropriating funds therefore.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassoun, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $82,200 for the 20% share of the transportation federal aid project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $108,862.25 within the 2020 budget to cover existing overdrafts.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to amend the city code to add Commonwealth Avenue will be a stop street on both sides at the intersection of J Street.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to authorize an agreement with RBT for audit John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Marshall and Sterling for the workers' compensation contract for two thousand and twenty-one.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to approve SECRE for a zone change for forty to forty-two Mill Street from I one to a DMU zone.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.[1651.86]